Pledge allegiance.
Okay, here we are. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. Can't hear anything. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Had it on before. Anyway, so the first order of business will be public announcements. Details may be found at www.farefieldme.com. On April 13th, 2022, there will be a public hearing at the Fairfield Community Center to hear public comments on the annual town budget meeting warrant. Nomination papers for MSAD 49 School Board are available due by April 15th, 2022 for the June 14th, 2022 election. Please contact the town clerk for details. Mid-Maine Chambers Business to Business Showcase is March 24th from 12 until 6:00 p.m. at Colby College. All right, our second order of business is public hearings. Now, on behalf of the Town Council, we welcome you to this very important and sure-to-be-informative meeting. Before I turn the meeting over to Dirigo Engineering, I would like to provide you with some historical information that has led us up to this point. In October of 2020, the town was informed of the Maine Department of Environmental Protections investigation into the PFOS contamination of private wells in Fairfield. Since that time, the Town Council has been focused on ensuring that all residents have access to clean drinking water. In April of 2021, the town issued a request for qualifications for civil and environmental engineering services for planning and development of public drinking water infrastructure. In June of 2021, after a committee review of all five highly qualified submissions, the Town Council awarded the bid to Dirigo Engineering. In December of 2021, the draft of Dirigo report was submitted to the Town Council and other parties of interest for review and comment. And in January of 2022, Dirigo met with the Town Council to discuss the report so that the final draft could be completed. That brings us now to this evening. The goal of tonight's public hearing is to have Dirigo Engineering review their preliminary engineering report, public water supply options for PFOS-impacted properties. We ask that you hold all questions until the presentation is finished. We also ask that only Fairfield residents speak, and our discussion remains to drinking Once they are done, I will declare the public hearing open, and the Town Council will be happy to hear questions and/or comments. Now, at that time, please make your way to the podium. When you get to the podium, be sure to print and sign your name. Please state your name and address for the record. Questions and comments need to be addressed to the Town Council, and due to the number of people here this evening, we ask that you keep your comments concise so that everyone can be heard in a timely manner. At this point, if you're thinking about it, could I get everybody to stand that was going to make a public, that's going to come and comment? Okay. All right, you may sit down. And we're going to try to keep it relatively timely so that we're not here all night long. So we'll try to, you know, if you can keep your comments in that, somewhere between three to four minutes would be very good to keep it gentle. Okay. So at this point in time... All right, what I would do is I will declare the public meeting open. First, I will ask if there's any email comments.
Well, we're gonna do the presentation first, and then we're gonna do the email comments.
Very good. Okay, so I will declare it open and turn the meeting to Dirigo.
Everybody hear me okay? I don't know if this microphone's working or not. Okay, great. All right. My name is Rick Perskin, and I have Jim Lord here with me. We're from Dirigo Engineering. We have a shop down the road in Shawmut there. Wanted to thank the Town Council for having us here and everybody for coming out what we found. You have the next slide there, Jim? The PFOS contamination, PFOS, you know, is the per in the polyfluoroalkyl substances for chemicals that were developed in the 1940s. They've been around for a long time. They're used in products that repel water, stain removers, stain repellents and things like that. Teflon is one of them, everybody's heard. And they're called forever chemicals because they just do not break down in the environment, and they bioaccumulate. They accumulate in living organisms, they accumulate in organisms that are higher in the food, similar like mercury. Studies indicate that there are health risks associated with some of these PFOS, but there's been very little studies done, and there's hundreds of these compounds, so the health risks of many of these have not been evaluated. Several manufacturers have voluntarily limited their products, but it's still widely distributed in the environment. I've read that we all have some in us. And, you know, the state of Maine being proactive has set a low 20 parts per trillion health advisory level, sticks at the PFOS compound. That is what the regulatory limit is. So this is the map that probably everybody has seen, gone on to DEP website here. These are the wells that have been tested. The green are under the HA, although I know I've gotten their database to an odd, everything that's red or green should be red. Some of these that are green are still over the limit there. Yep, I could try, I'm not sure. Maybe if I can get this a little closer here. Let me try to get this a little closer to me. All right? Yep, okay. Is that a little bit better? Okay, all right. So basically, this is the map of the area. This is our study area here. The little orange outlines there are areas where fudge has been spread, bio solids. And above the health advisory limit numbers are shown in red up there. The places where treatment equipment has been installed, it's in the yellow. And then the green are below the health advisory. Some of those are non-detect, but some of those also have low levels. In Fairfield, it was discovered in 2020 in a milk sample. And as of August 2021, 310 wells are sampled. I think we got the latest number from the DEP right now, and I'm going to supplement that. They've up to 370 water supplies now in Fairfield with 157 having concentrations of PFOS above the 20 parts per trillion limit. Also discovered some in Van and in Oakland. So the stamping is ongoing. Levels have been reported up to thousands, tens of thousands, the parts per trillion in the study area. And all of the wells most associated with areas where they're used for spreading of bio solids, fudge. Yeah, okay. PFOS treatment, the EPA has recommended treatment for PFOS, including granular or powdered activated carbon, certain types of absorptive medias, some ion exchange units, and reverse osmosis. And the DEP is currently providing treatment system to residents in the area that have results of higher than 20 parts per trillion. They're primarily consisting of sediment filters, either twin carbon absorption filters for lower levels, or twin resin ion exchange. Sometimes water softeners have to be installed ahead of the, because of the compounds that may interfere with treatment, take it from else. Some of the issues with it, especially with the high PFOS concentrations, have been short carbon life. You have issues with PFOS and ion exchange in units, and reverse osmosis backwash units. And then the big question is the long-term maintenance. Right now, the DEP is paying for it, and they said they will pay for it as long as funding is available, but we don't know what that means. Next slide, Jim? Okay. So our firm, we're a small engineering firm, medium-sized engineering firm located here in Fairfield, and we specialize in public infrastructure. We work all over the state of Maine. There's about six engineers that we have over there and some support staff. We were selected by the town of Fairfield through a proposal process. I think there were several firms that were submitted, but I think we had a good proposal, and we got the job. So our job was to review and assess the public water supply options, look at the environmental impacts of any proposed projects, develop conceptual plans, determine the permitting requirements, and prepare the cost estimates, and then prepare the report on findings, which is what we're discussing tonight. Thanks, Jim. So the potential sources, when you're looking for a public water supply, you're either looking at a groundwater source, developing a new groundwater source, developing a new surface water source, or an existing public water supply that can be extended there. Those are the three things we looked at. The potential surface water sources in Fairfield, if you were to develop your own supply, are very limited. Most surface water supplies in Maine are large lakes, Sebago Lake, I used to work for the Bangor Water District, Flood's Pond. Fairfield does not have any large ponds or lakes. So that leaves us with looking at a stream or a river for an intake there. Fish Brook is a large drainage area, but it's smack dab in the middle of the PFOS-contaminated area, so it's probably be a very risky source to develop. So you're left with looking at Martin Stream or Kennebec River if you're looking at surface water sources. The little slide for the little slide at the bottom there shows how you would do this. That's a river intake screen you'd have to put in there, but you'd also have to build a major treatment plant with coagulation, filtration, sedimentation, and chemical addition to it. So it'd be a very expensive thing to try to develop your own surface water supply. Can we go next one slide? Okay. Then we looked at potential groundwater sources. You have two choices with groundwater sources, sand and gravel aquifers and bedrock aquifers. We're gonna talk about the sand and gravel aquifers here first. The areas that are outlined with the heavy blue lines are the mapped sand and gravel aquifers in the Fairfield area. Every one of those little triangles is a potential contamination source. Some of those are the fields that they spread PFOS on, but they also include many other things, like the MTBE spill that was up in the Nyes Corner area, underground storage tanks, numerous, numerous potential contamination sources, and the old landfill out on the Green Road. And so most of the aquifers are very close to these potential contamination sources, so they would be risky to develop because they may very well be contaminated. The only area that I can see in town would be up in the extreme northwest corner there. There's an aquifer up in there that might be developed and provide enough water for the town, but it would be expensive to test and drill, and also to purchase land up in that area there. Technical difficulties. All right, thank you. Let's go to the next slide, Jim, and we'll look at the bedrock in the area. This map here shows the bedrock in the area. I'm a geologist also, in addition to being an engineer. I started as a geologist, and I just worked for engineers too long. But this is a bedrock map, and on top of this is, and it doesn't really show up too well, but there's some gray dots and red dots, and those are all wells from the main geological survey database. And they're superimposed, again, with the potential contamination sources. But there's, what we look for when we look for bedrock is we look for high-yield zones in the bedrock aquifer. And the only area that we find, again, that's away from contamination is up in that extreme northwestern part of the town of Fairfield there. So there is some potential out there if you wanted to develop your own supply, but... Next slide, Jim? Oh, sorry. But it's not gonna save any money. It's gonna cost more if you developed your own supply. You'd still need all the water mains that we get out here. You'd have to hook up the new source. You'd have to buy some land out there. You would have... You would have to do a new well or a river intake that would be required, and you would need staff to maintain and operate the new source. So we kind of ruled out these options early on because they would just be more expensive than the option that we selected. Next one on. We looked at existing public water sources that were out there. That's the next thing we looked at. What could we do? There's actually four public water systems in the area. The Goodwill Hinckley, but it's Goodwill Hinckley KVCC, and they really don't have the capacity to expand. As a matter of fact, if the project goes forward, they are interested in extending and connecting to the system too. Big Apple, the little convenience stores there in the Circle K, they have public water. They're private wells, but again, they don't have the capacity to expand. And a couple of these are very close to areas where there's PFOS contamination in the wells. That leaves us here with the Kennebec Water District, and that's what we're gonna be discussing a little bit more. Thanks, Jim. So the KWD is the oldest water district in the country. Fairfield's been an original member of it since 1899, when it was the Fairfield Village Corporation, I believe. And the KWD currently serves parts of Fairfield. It has the sufficient capacity to serve additional customers. Their source of water, that's the good news, their source of water is China Lake with a filtration plant in Vasselboro. Full disclosure, though, PFOS has been reported at levels of six to eight parts per trillion in their water, not being removed by their current filtration process, below the option, below the health advisory level, but still present there. But it is the best option for extending public water in the project area, for bringing it there. This map shows the existing public water system there. On the right is kind of the village area, the downtown. It heads up Route 201 to Shawmut area there. There's a dividing line. That system on the right-hand side is on the low-pressure gradient, what they call it, and it's supplied by pressure from the twin tanks on Pung Hill, right? Yeah, Pung Hill. And the blue line to the left as it heads out to Fairfield Center is what we call a constant-pressure system. That system is, basically senses the pressure in the system and ramps up pumps to meet the demand and slows them down when there's no demand there. It's not the most ideal type of system, but it's worked well out there in that area. It will work for a little while, but as we expand the system, it has to be changed. Okay, next one. This in the red shows the public water supply, water main extensions here. We've got proposed water mains heading up Six-Rod Road, Gagnon Road, out the Norwich Walk, Norwich Walk Road, out Middle Road, and we've got what we call the Northern Loop, heading up around Ohio Hill Road, connecting with Ridge Road, and coming back to Shawmut and down, coming back to Nyes Corner, and then back down to Shawmut to connect in. Included in this project, we would still use the booster station, but instead of running it as a constant-pressure system, we would need to have a standpipe out here. So that would provide the pressure for the system. And we would also put a pressure-reducing station up at Nyes Corner to allow water to come back around and keep everything fresh out there, and also to provide for high flows if you needed it for firefighting purposes. Okay. So this is the proposed water main extensions here, and in the blue, we have what we're, it's just a major project, we had to divide it into some kind of phases. This was our recommendation, but the report's kind of been tailored to go street by street, so the town can pick and choose what they want to tackle first. We figured we'd try to handle the low-hanging fruit first, with a little bit of a main extension in Shawmut to pick up some customers, heading out the Six-Rod Road, what's the name of that little road there? That Bickford Drive, and part of the way up to Norwich Walk, Norwich Walk Road and Ohio Hill Road. And this system could be serviced by the existing constant-pressure system, but as we expand further, that's when we're gonna need the reservoir and the pressure-reducing station, and we need to add to that. So we're gonna go through phase by phase here. Next slide, Jim? All right. So Phase 1, 2,300 linear feet of 8-inch main on Old County Road, that's up in Shawmut. A long run on Ohio Hill Road, 11,000, a couple miles of pipe there. A little short extension on Bickford Drive, short piece on Oakland Road that can get us over to Six-Rod Road, and then another 3/4 of a mile of main on the Norwich Walk Road. That would be what we put in there as Phase 1, but again, these are subject to change. Phase 2, Jim? Phase 2 is the big project where we complete the Northern Loop, and we have to add the standpipe, we have to add some booster chlorination to the existing station there, because the problem is, is that the water is old by the time it gets here. It comes all the way from China Lake, goes through reservoirs, and it's old as it gets here, and chlorine residual starts to decrease, so we need to maintain those chlorine residuals so we have safe drinking water out there. This is the reason for the Northern Loop, and looping things around, and letting water flow around that loop, and adding chlorination at the station to keep that water healthy and safe. So this is, you know, 6,000, 7,000 feet of 12-inch main on the Ridge Road, another 2100 feet of 12-inch main on the Joy Road. And we've, you know, we've picked some potential locations for standpipes there. We, there's several of them out there. Wilcox Hill looks like the best, but there's several of them out there, but in order to, you know, we'd have to negotiate with some landowners and see what's available out there. So this is all subject to change. We can put the mains in the right of way, but when we're talking about building a reservoir, you know, we have to do some negotiations and obtain the property to do that. So then we would do some main on the Howe Road, continue along the Fisher Road, Ridge Road, out to Ohio Hill Road, back into Nyes Corner, and then up Route 201 from Shawmut to Nyes Corner to make that loop around there. And again, we'd have to add that standpipe, the pressure-reducing station, and the booster chlorination. Okay, Jim, next one? Phase 3, we'd be basically doing the long extensions off of the core system, and it's long extensions on the Norwich Walk Road, going up the Oakland Road, Gagnon Road, a little piece on the Adams Road, which is out near the Middle Road, and the Middle Road out to the Martin Stream Bridge. Now, this doesn't get everybody, there's still a few outliers out there, but it doesn't really make too much economic sense to extend water main for a mile to pick up a couple properties there. So there may be some other isolated properties that are outlying that would have to take a different approach to this project here. Okay, so for our cost estimates, we put everything we could in it. We did leave one thing out, which was abandonment of old wells, if that is needed to be done, but our construction costs include the water main, the valves, hydrants, the water services, the connections into the private homes, the replumbing inside there that needs to be hooked up, a standpipe, the booster station rechlorination, pavement, ledge, traffic control, and a contingency. And the contingency is something we engineers put into the project to allow for increased costs or things like that. So we carried about a 20% contingency on this project, I believe. And generally, in the past, we've been doing 10%, but prices and material delivery are kind of getting out of sight now, so we started carrying higher contingencies to allow for the inflation that we're seeing. The other project costs include engineering costs, the design of it, the bidding of it, administering the contracts. We'd have several contracts and contractors we envision working on these projects. The inspection of the project to make sure it is coming out to Kennebec Water District standards, and the funding agency standards that are going to be paying for this, hopefully. It also includes the permits we have to get, and includes land purchase, and the interest on any money that needs to be borrowed in the interim to finance the project. Next one there. So the total estimated cost, including all those, 9.85 million for Phase 1, 20.5 million for Phase 2, 16.9 million for Phase 3, total estimated cost of 47.25 million to do this project. Next one, Jim? The permitting requirements, we also looked at. It would be a fairly simple project to permit. We'd have to have MDOT, we'd be on MDOT roads a lot, so we'd have to get their opening permits and a utility location permit for them. We'd have to get opening permits from the town of Fairfield. We'd have to get a couple, some simple DEP natural resources permits for going across some of the streams out there. And the US Army Corps of Engineers also looks at those. And then we would have to design this not only to state standards, but also to KWD standards, and KWD would have to accept the infrastructure at the end of the project because they would be the ones who maintain it. Next slide, Jim? We also looked at the environmental resources in the area, and I'm just gonna skip over this one pretty quick. You know, there's a few things out there, but there's really nothing that we're going to impact with this project here. So it should be a fairly straightforward project from the environmental resources aspect of it. Now we get into the financial considerations. So total project cost, 47.25 million. When we do our calculations in this report, we assume that none of this would be grant, although we are going to be trying to get as much grant as possible for this project, but we have to present the worst-case situation. The worst-case situation, if the town had to finance it themselves, we're talking about a $2 million debt service for 30 years. Very, very expensive. Also, increased fire protection charges. Fire protection charges are allocated among the Kennebec Water District customers based upon the revenue that they need from that. I'm not exactly sure what percentage of their revenue that is, but then it's just divided about how many hydrants are in the town, and it's split that way. So as you add hydrants, those fire protection fees will go up also. Customer charges right now would be estimated for what we call an average customer that uses 2,000 cubic feet a quarter, it'd be $390 per year. Now, some things that you should know, Kennebec Water District is regulated by the Main Utilities Commission, so they have people watching over them. They do not participate in cost sharing for main extensions. Some water districts do, but the Kennebec Water District does not. And they would own and they would maintain this system forever if it's completed. And they have to pay for that operation, maintenance, and depreciation of that water system forever. And in generally, those revenues come from customer charges. What the PUC will not allow the Kennebec Water District to do is to raise the rates on their other customers to fund a project like this, okay? It has to be distributed equally among everything there. So this project really needs to stand on its own. And so to make this proposed project sustainable without raising the rates, the Kennebec Water District is going to need revenue from customers along this water main to make sure that this system is here forever, because the water district is forever. They've been here for over 100 years, they'll be here for over 100 more, and then it's gonna be time to replace them, and they have to have that money to do that at that time. That's why revenue needs to be generated if the Kennebec Water District is to take over this project. Next slide, please. And again, their O&amp;M expenses are gonna increase because of additional meter reading, customer bills, service calls, maintenance service maintenance, pumping and treatment costs, additional reservoir and PRV, station maintenance costs, additional power for pumping, additional chlorine, I didn't add up there, and additional depreciation costs. So to make the project sustainable, local ordinance requiring all properties along the proposed water main extensions will likely be needed, unless some other funding source can be found. Okay? Next slide, please. Potential funding sources, that's what we're gonna talk about, and that's what we're gonna close our presentation for, because, you know, we are trying to find as much grant as possible for this project to see if it can make it financially viable, because it's going to need a lot of grant money, and we'd like to see 100%, and I bet everybody would. Currently, there are no sources of funding that are available specifically for this. The state passed a law in 2021, an act to investigate these substances there. They're testing and monitoring, they're installing the treatment systems. This is the money that they're working off of the impacted houses now. They have 1.8 million budgeted in 2021, 22, and they've got 3.6 million budgeted in 2022, 23. Fairfield may be the tip of the iceberg, though. I know they're starting to discover it in other places. I think I've heard of another one, they have to talk about doing a main extension, a short one down in southern Maine, just this week. Then, just this week, we see there's a current proposal to fund $100 million for assistance to farmers that have been impacted by PFOS. So that's encouraging, because if this is a project that needs the money, this is a project. Next. So since there's nothing that's specifically available for right now, we've been reaching out and looking at what we call the traditional sources of funding for these projects here. And those are community development block grant, Northern Border Regional Commission, USDA rural development, and the main drinking water program state revolving loan fund. Next one, please, Jim? Okay. So some of these are very limited in the money, you know? This CEDBG could give you a million-dollar grant with a 25% match, but that's dropping the bucket on a $47 million project. And an income survey is required for CDBG funds, and Fairfield is probably not gonna qualify based on income because it has to be pretty low before they will give grant money. So we don't really see CDBG as a good source of money. Next, Jim? Northern Border Regional Commission, they will fund up to $1 million with a 20% grant, 20% match by the town. 20% match by the town. It's a competitive process, and those applications are due in May of each year. This is a place that we've been working with local people on, and we probably will put it, submit some applications for this. The Rural Development, possibly 45 to 75% grant the way their programs are now. Your applications are accepted year-round. The money could be loaned or loan grant package to Fairfield, but Fairfield would need a written agreement with KWD to own and operate the water system because generally the loan funds, loan and grant funds go to the water district, okay? And the last one we're gonna talk about is the Main Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund. This is a program that's been in place for at least 20 years. It's funded through the EPA, partially in state funds, and it involves a mix of grants and low-interest loans depending on income levels in the community there and the rates that are being charged for the water. It's probably the best source of funding for this project right now. It's, uh, the funds will only be available to the Kennebec Water District. They wouldn't be available to the town, so there would need to be an agreement, if there was any debt on this, that the town would be paying off the debt and the, uh, basically the town would have to pay off the debt, so we wouldn't encumber the Kennebec Water District with that. It's a competitive process. The applications are due in the fall of each year. This application would score high because it's a public health threat, and public health threats always score high on these applications. It would probably score right at the top. Currently, up to 75% grant, the rest low-interest loans. But there's the new bipartisan infrastructure plan, which we're all learning about now. They're proposing $9 billion federal dollars, that's nationwide, to address the PFAS and emerging contaminants nationwide, and it's going to be all grant. Maine is expected, Maine is a 1% state. We get 1% of the share based upon our population. And Maine is expected to receive $8 million per year for the next five years. And that's about what we know now, okay, as far as funding sources. And with that, I am going to thank you for having me here and say goodnight. Well, we'll be here to answer questions, too. Thank you.
Okay. Now, at this point, we'd like to hear public comments on options for extending public drinking water in the town of Fairfield. So if we will declare the public hearing open, first thing I'll do is ask for email comments.
Yes, we did receive, um, three different emails, well, emails from three different individuals. We received an email from Lawrence Higgins. His statement was, "The town of Fairfield should not extend the public drinking water without a grant large enough to cover the whole cost. Fairfield town residents should not be penalized because the state of Maine failed to do the research on the sludge before allowing it to be spread on the fields. Either the state of Maine or the manufacturers of the chemicals must be forced to be held accountable, not the Fairfield residents. Our taxes are too high as it is." Who is going to pay the cost of our wells and, of closing off our wells and dispose of the filter systems that DEP has installed? None of this was caused by Fairfield residents. I did end up getting back to Mr. Higgins to let him know that the cost of the closing out of the wells, as Mr. Perskin had mentioned, was not in the original estimates. However, with the contingency that is in the program, and of course, as this piece develops, that would be included. And then later, earlier this morning, Mr. Higgins had emailed me back with an additional questions. Will the town people have a choice, chance to vote on this order for it to pass? And also, whose taxes would increase? Every Fairfield resident or only the ones that would require a new hookup? My answer to him was that the town council is considering putting forth a referendum vote on the public drinking water expansion project in June. This is on the agenda for this evening after the public hearing. And then, should there be a need to bond any portion of this project after all other avenues of funding are exhausted, the bond would be repaid through taxation. The cost would be spread amongst Fairfield's entire property tax-paying population. This is the same process with all bonds. For example, the town is currently paying for five sewer bonds. 50% is paid through taxation and 50% through sewer fees. Please keep in mind that there would still be a need for a great deal of investigation into repayment options should this occur. I have had discussions about the possibility of agreements with the water district regarding a potential using a portion of the rates they collect over a period of time. There is undesigned fund money, as well as the ARP funds that the municipality has received. We simply do not have the answers at this time because we do not know what the potential funding sources will be, and each source has its own program requirements." And so, and then informed him in this email what the answer was regarding the closure of the wells. And then we had one, um, an email this morning from a Darren Hamilton. It says, "My name is Darren Hamilton. My family and I are residents of the town of Fairfield and live on Ohio Hill Road. We are a young family and hope to make Fairfield our forever home. I have not been very vocal in regards to the PFAS contamination that affects my property and that of my neighbors to this point. I have seen the discussion around the proposed public water system and feel that I must now speak up. I have listened to many people speak about the post on Facebook, how they want to shut down the project before it even gets started, or how they will not accept the public water if provided. In my opinion, a rash and emotional approach to solving the PFAS..." In my, yeah, in my opinion, a rash and emotional approach to solving a PFAS problem in Fairfield. "The town has invested a lot of time and hard work in supporting residents since the start of the mess, distributing bottled water, providing a centralized hub for information, and now commissioning a report to look at permanent solutions to the drinking water contamination. I applaud local government for stepping up and doing what is necessary to support the citizens. I, like many other members of the town, found the report to be somewhat alarming when a 17.5% tax increase was mentioned. While I cannot support such an increase in property taxes, I believe the project is primed to receive a tremendous amount of grant funding. If a large portion of the project can be completed without increasing the tax burden on residents, it seems like the right thing to do for the long-term vitality of our community. My family would welcome the opportunity to connect to the new public water system and not have to worry about the quality of our water. I recently read an article that mentioned how many properties are within the proposed distribution area and not above the 20 parts per trillion health advisory. I have tremendous concerns for my neighbors who are below the health advisory and not receiving any state assistance in the form of filtration system. The availability of public water will eliminate, eliminate the risk proposed by ever-changing groundwater conditions. I believe the public water system will not only support the current residents, but also the new families to call Fairfield's home. The DIRGO Engineering Report noted a reduction in population over the past 20 years in Fairfield to provide in public water in areas of contamination will allow for development of homes and allow new families like mine to call Fairfield's home. Welcoming new families to help propel the town forward for the next 100 years should be the goal of all residents and town officials. When DEP funding for in-home filtration systems runs out or is reduced, I'm not sure my family or any others can afford to have our water tested frequently and replace the filters when they become ineffective. I don't want to be forced out of Fairfield, but without a long-term, self-sufficient public water system, my family might have to make a hard decision to move to another town. The Hamilton family would like to encourage the town to not abandon the progress made so far and proceed with seeing what grant funding is available to complete this important project for the future growth and economic vitality of Fairfield. We simply cannot afford to wait 10 to 20 years for state, federal, or judicial government to solve the problems that we are faced with today." And then one more from Ashley Goldrop. She lives at 25 Howe Road in Fairfield, Maine with her fiance Troy Rennie. "We feel that no taxpayer in Fairfield should have to pay for the public drinking water expansion. The polluters are the ones who should have to pay for this. The Fairfield town residents pay enough in taxes as it is. The home that we bought has well water, and that was on purpose. We did not want town water. We believe, again, that the pop, polluters should have to pay our, to maintain our filters. The town water has PFAS levels in it. We want to keep our filters to make sure, make it so that we have no level of PFAS in it. It seems crazy to us that we would no longer use the filters and hook up to water that we know has more PFAS in it. We also believe that public water is not going to fix the huge problem. There is major issues with our soil now. We cannot use our property that we have bought as our forever home in a way that we intended when we purchased the property. The polluters are the ones responsible to clean up our land and continue to pay for our filters, and we think that the town should take legal actions against these, these polluters to make this happen." And that is it for any email comments we had received prior to the meeting.
Very good, thank you. All right, now what I'll do is declare this, that all those that wish to speak, remembering must print and state name and sign and put their name and address. So if you wanna start, why, we can start a lineup and go to the podium, and you may speak.
I have one page of testimony. Can you hear me? Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Nathan Saunders, and my wife and I live at 30 Howe Road in Fairfield. Over the last 13 months, the DEP has taken 10 PFAS samples at our well water, and an average level of PFAS in our water was 14,800 parts per trillion. That's 700 times the state enforcement level of 20 parts per trillion. Our well is highly contaminated with man-made industrial PFAS chemicals which have health risks. We've been drinking the water for 32 years. According to the Agency for Toxic Substance Disease Registry, the PFAS levels in my blood exceed the average level in workers at DuPont and 3M, the companies that make the chemicals, and my contamination occurred living at my home. The residents of Fairfield did not create this problem. Because many drinking water wells in Fairfield have been contaminated by industrial sources, safe water needs to be provided to all impacted residents completely, 100% at the expense of the industries that use PFAS and created PFAS-contaminated waste that is now in our drinking water and our bodies, regardless of whether or not regulations on PFAS existed in past years. Not the residents of Fairfield, not the town of Fairfield, not the Kennebec Water District, none of these entities should pay a cent toward providing safe water to all residents with contaminated water. Regarding the industries that created PFAS waste that has polluted this community, I say this: In the end, their business model over the years has not worked out as planned because their processes, cradle to grave, have significantly polluted this community. So all the profits they made over those many years need to be returned to this community to clean up this mess they are responsible for creating. Their profit margins didn't include this cleanup cost as they needed to, and they need to come to the table and pay the full cost of their products. If PFAS was identified by the EPA as a quote hazardous waste, and it is not yet, the town would be very likely a superfund site, and responsible parties would be identified and made to pay for the cleanup costs. But that is not a solution at this time. However, this PFAS problem is clearly a hazardous waste problem for the town of Fairfield because we are here tonight to discuss spending $47 million to resolve the drinking water PFAS contamination in our town. The DEP stated publicly that land near my home was spread with biosolid sludge from the Kennebec Sanitary Treatment District, and that a local industry contributed, quote, "a significant industrial wastewater component" to KSTD. There are approximately 150 contaminated wells in Fairfield, and this is clearly an issue for the town of Fairfield, whose property value, property resale values are plummeting as a result of this contamination. If this issue is not resolved, residency in Fairfield will plummet soon as well, along with the tax base. What potential home buyer will want to move their young family to a town significantly contaminated with a dangerous, long-lasting chemical? Here's my request to the town of Fairfield. Because this is a major town issue, I ask that the town negotiate with local PFAS-using industry to pay for the entire cost of bringing safe water to all affected homes. Whether it be a water main or a water filter, the responsible parties need to pay for every penny of either option wanted by the homeowner. If PFAS users do not agree in good faith to pay to provide safe water to all affected homes, I ask that the town file a lawsuit against PFAS-using industries, the responsible parties, for the cost. As a town council, I ask that you help make this happen, and please don't give me a new bill. I have paid much, much more than I should have already. Thank you, and I have copies of my testimony.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bruce Harrington. I wish Mr. Sanders had gone last. Basically, he said everything I'm gonna, I wanted to say, so I, I won't waste time on that. I'm a father, I mean, I'm a husband, I'm a father of three, grandfather of 14. I feel like I failed there on this deal, and it's all coming down to the drinking water, too, you know, not being safe for my family. Bottom line is, a crime was committed here with this PFAS situation that's going on. And in any situation when there's a crime and you get the person there that committed the crime, you make them pay for it. You don't bring the rest of his family in, you don't bring his neighbors in and stuff like that to pay for it. You make that person that committed the crime pay for it. I say, find the head of the snake, and they're working at it now, and take the head of that snake off and make them pay for it. Basically, everything else that Mr. Saunders has said, I ditto. I think it's, it's the, you know, it was a very good presentation from him, and I hope you folks take it to heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ricky Nash. Live on 24 Nash Lane off Ohio Hill Road. Mine's gonna be very brief, not as elegant as everyone else probably is gonna speak. Rick, I appreciate your presentation tonight. My concern, biggest concern is, yes, I agree, someone should be held accountable. Unfortunately, I do agree, the public water system is probably the best way forward. The numbers, I think, are staggering to all of us. We all pay substantial taxes. My issue is what I read, I don't know if this is accurate or not, maybe Rick can enlighten me. KWD, um, see if I phrase this right, give me a second. The, they want us to pass an ordinance requiring us to hook up that goes by our properties. I am one of the fortunate ones at the moment. So far, I'm non-detect. But my nearby neighbor, who has an 18-month-old daughter, they are just above the limit. And I'm substantially off the road. I do not feel that we should be mandated or held to that standard, that if it goes by, we have to connect. And I've been involved with this, I've done construction work my whole life, sewers, waters. I've been in other towns where this has been an issue. Sewer runs by the house, hey, my system, suck, the system's fine. And they were still required to hook it up. Other towns took a more lenient approach or proactive approach. Okay, well, when your system fails, then hook up. So I, I just wanted to express that. I didn't feel comfortable reading that if it went by your property, you'd be required to hook up. I guess that's my main thing. And I do agree, there is a huge issue here in the town. I expressed to a lot of people in the last 20, 25 years about the sludge spreading in Fairfield, but my concern was the heavy metals that were in the sludge not knowing about PFAS contamination, which a lot of people, I hadn't seen it mentioned anywhere. I've talked to a lot of people that were involved in these treatment plants over the years, so I don't feel I'm talking out my butt when I'm saying this. The cadmium, the mercury, all the leftover minerals. And I applaud everyone for trying to come up with a solution. That's all I have to say. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Sorry, I got a long name. Okay, I'm Kathy Harrington, Bruce's wife. We live at 17 Howe Road, Fairfield, and our well presently is testing at 32,000 parts per trillion. And we do not feel safe at our house, no matter what. We have the water system, they have to keep changing the filters. our grounds, everything's contaminated, dust, ground, pipes, everything. So it's quite an extreme thing. We figure that, like, this big cost that's going on here, it's not anybody in this room, in this town, that should be shouldering that, because this was done to us. My husband, when they first started bringing all this sludge up, tried to stop it. These were permitted dumping. They said we had no rights, it was safe. We put chemicals in here, you're safe. So this was done to us, and we don't feel like we should have to pay. That's like asking victims, come on in, you're gonna pay to make yourselves better now. It's just not right, and we're already taxed enough for land that we don't feel safe in. So it's just not, it's, I just don't think, it's a crime, as far as I'm concerned. Yep, that's about all I have, because, yeah, if they want to tax the people here, we're on our way out, which is too bad. We've lived in Fairfield for thirty-seven years. We're just gonna be on our way out. It's a sad situation, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Penny Harkins, and I live over on thirty-four Courier Road in Fairfield. I own an aquarium business, I grow soft corals there. My business uses a heck of a lot of water. I'm one of the highly contaminated, I'm running over seven thousand. My husband died seven and a half years ago, and I'm pretty sure that PFAS was linked to his death, I can't prove it right now, but all my research is pointing to it. So the ones of us who have been highly contaminated, and I bring that up only is because this has affected us in so many ways that we can't even begin to describe to you, can't even begin to describe. Health issues up the wazoo, and it's a real thing. And I'm sorry to say, I don't agree with not much research has been done, anybody wants to get out there and look, it's there, okay? I agree with all the previous speakers, we didn't do this to ourselves, and I don't want my Fairfield residents, you know, people that I've lived with my whole life, I was born and raised in Fairfield. I don't want you guys paying for something that we didn't do. I don't want to lose my business because I have to pay higher taxes for water. Lost enough already. Lost enough. And people who have, like Kathy and, you know, Nate Saunders and all those guys that are highly contaminated and that, they have too. And our pets, I can't, I won't even go there. So I'm here tonight to tell you that I agree with Nate and the other speakers, that we need to go after the people that did this to us. And right now, the people that did this to us was the DEP certified and allowed, authorized, and selected passes of ground for biosolids to be spread. And thank God, they've stepped up to the plate, and they've been helping us. So right now, all of us who have gap filters have cleaner water than anybody, anywhere. Our test results come back at non-detect, and any other arsenic or any other issues, chemicals or what have you, it's gone. So we're resting for the first time a little bit easy because we've got clean water. And now our town, which is not even up to them to take care of, it's the state that should, in my opinion, and like Nate said and the others, that DuPont or whoever else that, you know, and the companies that use these chemicals are responsible for this and should pay for this. Not you, not me, not the town. You shut down our wells, do you realize that Maine is a very much a spring, I mean Fairfield is a very much a spring-fed area? I know for me, I've got three wells on my property. If you shut down my wells, it's gonna affect my, literally, my land. It'll probably flood me out. Okay, so add insult to injury. And lastly, I want to mention that, with my own research, where does a town have authority to do this? Because the state of Maine doesn't have a statute that allows any municipality in Maine to force hookup to water. They do for sewer, but they're silent in Maine, I mean silent on water. So right now, I think maybe the council ought to look at that, or if you have evidence of authority, right now I'd like to see it. But as of this moment, I'm asking our town council to drop this project now, without spending any more of our hard-earned money towards something that isn't ours to deal with to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Ed Mallie, I live on Ponderosa Lane on the end of Bigford Drive. My property abuts the power line, and Fairfield Center's right across the, about a mile from Fairfield Center. I am one of the lucky ones, my well tested one point two-two. We have beautiful water. I don't know why, but it is. And according to your slideshow, you want to introduce water in my, to my house that is six to seven hundred percent higher than my levels right now. That ain't gonna happen. You had a better chance of breathing underwater.
I don't want to do anything.
I feel bad for people, really bad for people who are affected. I, as you can tell, I'm not from here, I am from away. I moved up here in two thousand sixteen and retired. One day I'll die here, but it ain't gonna be today, it ain't gonna be tomorrow. And right now, our water is outstanding. Clear, tastes good. We all know that town water sucks. Tastes like, tastes terrible. You know, the chlorine is, it's not good. And if the PFAS is six to eight parts per trillion, you're way over me already. And now, I noticed on your bunch of graphs, that Ponderosa Lane, which is an extension of Bigford Drive, is not included in your cost estimates, and I don't know if it's just because it's a private road, will private roads be, will fall under this burden? Will I have to? I have a big problem with you have to. A huge problem with you have to. It's one of the reasons I moved up here. I did come up here to assimilate, not take over. But I will not be told what I can drink and what I can't drink, that I can promise you. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Max Kenny, I live at two eighty-nine Ohio Hill Road in Fairfield. I grew up in Fairfield on Ohio Hill Road and recently purchased a home there with my fiancee after living in York County for the past nine years. We are thankful that DEP has provided us with a filtration system to remove the majority of the PFAS that contaminates our well water. However, we know that the filtration systems and bottled water are not the long-term solution to the water crisis in Fairfield. We have great concern for what happens when DEP's funding runs out, as they have indicated it may, and we are left to test our water monthly for PFAS and change out our filtration system when breakthrough inevitably occurs. The cost to homeowners will be in the thousands of dollars per year. I believe the town of Fairfield officials are doing the right thing and acting in a responsible manner when it comes to evaluating what options are available to help the affected citizens, including myself, my parents, my grandparents, and many other friends and neighbors who have been unknowingly consuming high levels of PFAS for years. The extension of the public water system to the affected areas will provide many benefits to the citizens who live there, as well as the rest of the town for generations to come. Water utilities are required to meet all federal and state standards for water quality, including PFAS, hardness, pH, coliforms, arsenic, lead, and other harmful contaminants. I would feel very comfortable drinking the water that I know is continuously tested and monitored by highly skilled water quality professionals, the same water that is consumed by hospitals, nursing homes, and schools all around our region. In addition, should health advisories change in the future, including a limit of zero PFAS, all municipal water utilities would be required to change processes or implement additional treatment techniques to provide compliant water. Besides clean water for myself and my family to drink, extending the public water system will provide numerous other benefits. Homeowners will be able to eliminate the use of their private well and pressure tank and well pump, which costs the average household hundreds of dollars a year in electricity usage. Water will be available to flush toilets and access for drinking during a power outage. High quantities of water will be available nearby for firefighting purposes. Life safety and property preservation is a major component of public water infrastructure, often overlooked and very underappreciated. Homeowners won't have to question the ever-changing groundwater characteristics in Fairfield. Multi-year-long, high-paying jobs for local contractors and their employees if this project sees implementation. Increased property values for all homes with public water availability. And lastly, opportunities for increased residential, commercial, and industrial development on land that is otherwise useless and currently bogging down the tax rolls. Increased development on this land would help offset any tax burden to all taxpayers in the town of Fairfield. This project, if completed, would provide clean, consistent, and reliable water all for around a dollar a day to the average single-family home, a small cost that is offset significantly by the electrical savings of not operating a well pump. Residents will still be able to maintain their filtration systems, should they choose to do so, as an added level of protection. Lastly, I had a great childhood growing up in rural Fairfield, knowing my neighbors and being so close to family. I hope to give that same gift to my future children, with them growing up consuming clean water and one day building a house on our family land. The extension of the public water system will allow for that to happen, when it otherwise would be a health risk or very cost prohibitive. I urge the town to continue to fight for a long-term solution to this water crisis where residents aren't relying on DEP's current goodwill. We can't afford to lose our momentum. Funding for this project is here now, Fairfield is the squeaky wheel, and residents like myself need this help. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Higgins from three fifty-six Middle Road. A lot of the topics have already been discussed, but right now I pay nothing for my water. I have clean water. No, I don't have a filtration, but a lot of people around me do. And the people that do have the filtration have no detect. Now, when it comes to dollars and cents, I think no detect is a lot more important than dollars. If this goes through with the public water, you're introducing water which the last test for China Lake was seven point six. People say, oh, well, that's miles. Well, the latest report from the EPA, this was done October twenty-first of November's, let's see, through, so October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one through November sixteenth of twenty twenty-one, the EPA released a press release. The EPA's proposed toxicity assessment for PFOA and PFOS, in particular, are so incredibly low that many question whether readily accessible technology currently exists that would allow testing at such low levels. Nevertheless, what should catch the eye of businessmen with current or legacy PFOA and PFOS used concerns is the fact that the levels are so far below one point oh that they, for all intents and purposes, may account to zero level of acceptable daily dose for ingestion. This is especially true for PFOA, which may have a likely carcinogen classification which would force the EPA's hand to recognize, albeit perhaps not explicitly, a no-safe level for PFOA. It says no-safe level, the final findings, no-safe level of PFAS, and by implication, any product with any level of ingestion or absorbable PFAS in them are inherently dangerous to consumers. That's no levels. And you want to introduce the people to seven point six that are getting zero right now? That's not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm George Hofgren. I recognize a bunch of you people. It's nice to see everyone here. Thank you so much to the council for hosting this, because it's so important that people get to have a voice or get to express some of their strong emotions with this. I wrote something out, and some of it is a description of my personal experience, because I didn't grow up here, but though you may not believe it, I actually partially moved here because of PFAS, even though they didn't call it that twenty-five years ago. I can explain. But on top of all that, this might end up actually being kind of a blessing in disguise. If you're old enough to remember the environmental movement of the seventies and the Clean Water Act that started right here in Maine with Ed Muskie, then you're aware that one of the reasons we are healthy now compared to the way the water was in the fifties and the sixties was civic action. If you get sick from drinking water, it's not necessarily because there's one bag of things that's gonna kill you the next day that you drank it, it's because you ignored your water, you never had it tested, and after twenty, thirty, a lifetime of years, one small, one small item, you don't even know what it is, harms you. So right now, not only are we all meeting here, but throughout the state, you're hearing that they're finding lead in certain places, they're finding arsenic, these are poisons, okay, and these are really bad, especially for children. So this whole conversation is good, what comes out of this ultimately will be better water. And I think that it's great here because even though it's kind of shocking, especially if people have tested high where they are, and at least Fairfield is ahead of the curve, there's so much to understand about water, water supply, I mean, I could, obviously I could talk for an hour here, we already had a whole presentation, and that only was the tip of the iceberg when it comes to qualities of water and human health and water. So the fact that we already know so much means that as this conversation goes on for the next, it could be four, five, even ten years, you guys are on top of it, you're not overwhelmed by the information, and now you just have to defer to the state or defer to other class action suits or whatnot. So I think that that's all very good. Obviously, it's not good that there is perfluorinated chemicals in our soil for those of us that don't live in town in Fairfield. So I'll read you this little thing right here. If it seems wordy, I'll stop, or whatever, it's off-topic, I'll stop. Thank you, everybody. You note that I said soils, okay, being affected, not water. I moved here from Long Island, New York back in nineteen ninety-three. With my small family, I had hoped to relocate from the greater New York City area, in small part due to the garbage they were hauling out of the projects. These were old burnt-out buildings in areas like Brooklyn and the Bronx. I saw them hauling off huge roll-offs full of human trash, insulation, electronic sprinkler systems, building materials coated with old paint, literally anything you could think of. At that time, ocean dumping had also become restricted to municipalities like New York, that's what they used to do in the thirties, they'd send it out in the ocean and just dump it. They stopped doing that. I didn't think much about that, I left, I didn't look back, I headed to Maine. And soon, I found a little old farm, it was advertised in the back of the, I found it in the back of the, I was wrapping a present for my sister up in Cornville, and there was an ad for an eighteen seventy-four farm, twenty-five acres supposedly, on the Kennebec River for sale by owner, okay?
Thirty seconds.
Oh, okay. So I think that we don't need to worry too much about the water specifically at this point, because the state has stepped in and made it better for people. I think we need to worry about the soil. For those of us that choose to live in the country, our ground is just as important as the actual water that we drink. And I think that we need to put this on hold and worry about the state and worry about the larger macro picture to see what holds for us. Thank you, so much.
Hello, my name is Kevin Kitchen, I live on fifty-seven Howe Road in Fairfield, also a candidate for state senate coming up in June. Is this the time, I want to make sure this is the time where I can ask some questions? Yes? All right, I have a couple of questions, most of them were answered, I have four key questions I, that I have. One was, what was the deciding factor on the different phases? Phase one, two, three?
And I think that we need to put this on hold and worry about the state and worry about the larger macro picture to see what holds for us.
Thank you, time's up.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name's Kevin Kitchen. I live on 57 Howe Road in Fairfield, also a candidate for state senate coming up in June. Is this the time, I want to make sure this is the time where I can ask some questions? Yes? All right, I have a couple of questions. Most of them were answered. I have four key questions that I have. One was, what was the deciding factor on the different phases? Phase 1, 2, 3, who got, who is part of what phase? That's one question I have. Another question, and I think it's been brought up a couple of times, is the local ordinance mandating all to use, even if they have good wells? My question would be, is that legal? I think Penny or somebody else brought that up. Another question I have is, will this be maintained if you're on a private road? I didn't see anything on that at all. I live at the end of a private road on Howe Road, and I don't have anything up there. I looked at the map, for example, and the water pipeline ended right where the pavement ends. So, I don't know if it's going to continue to go up to the other four or five residents up there. Which, if not, then we have a serious problem, because one of those red triangles is actually where my swimming pool is. And then the final question I have is, and I didn't see anything in there, is as far as the contract goes, if it's a fixed-price contract, is it a cost-plus contract? That type of, what type of contract are we looking at in case there are overages? Obviously, with inflation rate being at 8%, and we're looking at four years down the road, whatever it may be to completion, what are the overages? Are we going to lock into a contract? Or what type of contract are you asking the town taxpayers to step up to? Thank you.
To answer those questions, I hope I remember them all. The phases basically were picked because it's just a large project.
I can't hear you.
The phases were picked because it's a large project and can't be done in one year. And the phases were picked based upon the rationale of trying to get the most bang-for-your-buck in the first phase by extending the system without adding improvements like the stand pipe and the PRV station. Phase 2 was selected for water quality purposes primarily, to get the loop around there and to make sure that we could maintain the water quality in the Kennebec Water District system. And Phase 3 was selected as everything else that was left over. It was a way to break the project up. It's nothing written in stone. Let's see, your second question was private property?
Private road.
Private road. The Water District can install mains on private roads as long as they are provided with an easement.
I'm sorry, what?
The Water District can install mains on private roads as long as they have an easement.
As long as what?
An easement.
I wear hearing it, but I am harder to hear.
It has to come from whoever owns the underlying land.
And then what about the contract? What type of contract is that?
Well, we envision this contract being bid in several parts and several contractors handling this, and all contracts are done by the low bid process. And so, the contractor is, you know, basically looks over the job and assumes that they know everything that they need to know. And we get unit prices for all materials, and that's how we control the cost on the project there. Sometimes you encounter more ledge than you expect, and you do get some cost overruns, but all contracts will be bid to local private contractors. Or maybe not local, but state of Maine usually.
That's kind of scary. I think we've all been beneficiaries of the cost of the lowest bidder, so.
Your highest bidder? Well, unfortunately, those are state regulations. I mean, if you have projects, public works projects, that are over a certain amount, they have to be bid, and they have to be designed by a professional engineer. That's state law.
Right. And the town council has always looked at the most qualified as well as the lowest cost.
All right. That's it, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
He had one more question.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes, thank you. Do you want me to clarify that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, the question regarding the ordinance and the authority for that, I believe that falls to the town under the Home Rule Authority, so that if an ordinance is passed that affects the entire community, that ordinance would stand true as long as there's not a law in existence that overrides that. There are ordinances that already do exist throughout the state of Maine. We've started collecting them, reviewing them, and how would this all work? So, again, the town council has had two months more time to review some of this stuff than what the general public has by putting the report forward, so it is still a work in progress.
Thank you. I'm Shelley Rudnicki. I'm the state rep for Fairfield. I'm also a resident of Fairfield. And first of all, as you can tell by the folks that have spoke here tonight and those that I've gotten phone calls from and everything, this is a very emotional issue for a lot of people, because it affects their health and their well-being, it affects their family, it affects their homes, and it affects their tax dollars. It affects a lot of us for that. We don't live in town, we don't have city water. If we live outside of town, we're used to being on wells. I will tell you, I'm an exception. I live out in the center, but I am the end of city water. I have the last house to get city water. Now, when I bought my house over 25 years ago, I was given an option. I have a well, but I also have access to city water. We were told, we want to hook into city water, we could, or we could keep the well. For the first 10-plus years, we kept the well. I had my blood tested. I have PFAS in my system. But about 10, 15 years ago, we had a broken pipe in our well, so we chose to go with city water. That was a choice we got. What I think right now is, people need to be given a choice. If they're going to put, if you want to put the town water out, fine. Probably 70% of the people will say, "Yes, I want to hook into it." But the folks that don't want to hook into it should be given a choice. It shouldn't be a mandate. If you've seen my voting record, then you'll know that I don't vote for mandates. I don't agree with them, I don't believe in them. I think that when you're forcing somebody to do something, when it affects them, this affects their property taxes, this affects their, it affects them. I have friends here, friends, neighbors here that have the system. They have the new system that was put in for the filters, and their levels are lower than what mine are, being on city water. So, they want that choice. They want the option to keep it or not. I think it's something that does need to be evaluated by the town before moving forward and telling us we have to do those things. Give them the choice. The other thing is, maybe you can ask and talk to Kennebec Water District. I did have a meeting with Kennebec Water District probably a little over a year ago, because I had said, "Why don't we, you know, start looking at city water?" when a lot of this stuff came up. And they did say to me at that time was that they will not use current ratepayers to pay for infrastructure, that the town would have to do that. This is what you've said tonight, okay? That makes sense to me. I'm a ratepayer now. I have city water. I do pay about $80 every three months. But again, that's my choice. I could get the pipe fixed in my well, and I could go back on well water if that's what I wanted to do. I will tell you, my neighbor right next door doesn't have city water. They don't have a choice. We want the choice, and I think that's what I'm hearing from most people here, is they want the choice. So, maybe part of the contract with, that you work out with the Kennebec Water District is getting a percentage that are willing to sign on. Instead of 100%, give us an option. I think that is really one of the most important things that we can do right now, is just give us a choice. I do want to thank you, you guys. It sounds like you're being proactive on what we need, so I will thank you for that, because that's what we need right now, is to be proactive with this. But again, it's got to go back to choice for these folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have a long name as well. My name is Philip Buckstabber. I work at Meridian's Kitchen and Bar in Fairfield, Maine, 166 Main Street. We opened in June of 2019 with the goal to bring as much food from local communities as possible and to not order food from far away. In the growing seasons, we estimate that up to 90% of the food from our restaurant comes from within 25 miles of our restaurant. Water is the theme and topic of our discussion tonight, but I do believe that the gentleman who mentioned soil, that is a big concern, because you can bring all this water in from the Kennebec Water District, and that's not going to change the fact that your vegetables are poisoned in your garden. Graduated from University of Maine with a degree in horticulture in 2016, and the PFA levels in water, yeah, you're drinking it, and it's terrifying, but that doesn't change the grass that's growing, everything that's around you. There was a warning that said that you shouldn't eat the deer that you hunt. And based on some of the individuals I see in the audience here, I can't think of a worse punishment for them. That's all that a lot of us live for. We take great pride in the restaurant in providing the cleanest and freshest ingredients as possible, and we based the entire restaurant on this, and it's been absolutely heart-wrenching to move my family into this community. I have a 15-year-old daughter, or a 15-month-old daughter, excuse me, little girl. Got a long ways to go. And it terrifies me to bring my little girl into this community with water levels even through the Kennebec Water District that are 7 parts per million, or trillion. That's a very hefty budgetary proposition, $50 million. I think that it's the duty of the town of Fairfield, it's the duty of the state of Maine to, I can say, take 20% of that proposal and sue the boots off of whoever did this to us. You can look back as far as you need to. It seems pretty clear that most people here don't want to be forced to tap into water if their water's clean, and they shouldn't have to pay for something that they're the victim of. I can't imagine losing a family member to cancer based on drinking the water to where I live. The people who did this need to be held responsible, and that's as clear as day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alex Poohlin. I own two properties in Fairfield, one on city water, one not on city water. I also have at least eight family members that live in Fairfield that are affected by PFAs. I have a sister who runs a daycare. My son goes to that daycare. She has water affected, water that is affected with PFAs. She has a filtration system installed, non-detectable PFA levels. Why do I want my son drinking water from the town, city, that it has higher water, higher PFA levels than what my sister currently has? I do not agree with this ordinance that requires us or those affected to tap into that water. I also eventually will probably move back to the property that does not have water, does not have city water, and I have a well on. Why would I want to have, to be forced to drink PFAs-laced water? Please don't allow this ordinance to go through. Give us the choice. Allow us to make the decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Andre. I own a property on 1110 Lotz Road. It's a business property and farm lot. I'm also a candidate for the state senate. Couple of pieces of data I was missing. First, how many affected households have tested positive within the area you intend to service, approximately?
Yeah, yeah. Approximately 141 wells, that number's gone up, that are above the 20 parts per trillion, 123 wells below, and 46, but that's changed. This was from August last year. I think we just had some more recent numbers here.
About 150.
There's 23 more in Benton. In Oakland, 10 identified, 40 in Benton. 370 total, 157 contained. Okay, 370 in Fairfield, 157 contain concentrations of PFAS above the 20 parts per trillion. I can't tell you out of this information how many non-detects there were.
So, the total number of homes tested was 300 and?
370 in Fairfield.
And 100 of them tested? 150.
157 were above the 20 parts per trillion health advisory limit. We don't know how many of the other ones were, had traces of PFAS below it or were non-detect.
Have all the households that have tested positive above the normal limit?
It's older data.
Or acceptable limit? Have they received mitigation services at this point?
Pardon me? I'm sorry.
The homes that have tested above the limit, have they all received mitigation services?
I can't answer that question. You have to ask the DEP that.
The DEP?
Yes.
We don't have any rough numbers on that.
I don't have any information on that. We were looking at extending the public water supply.
Okay. Yep, so that didn't involve your discussion? That's a DEP question?
Yeah, that would be a question for the DEP.
And 157 have tested above the limit within the service area you're looking at with all three phases?
Correct.
What is the cost per household of the affected households?
47.25 million divided by 157.
I don't have a calculator.
I don't either. It's a lot of money.
It's, if my math is right, it's close to $20,000 per household, or is it more? 315,000 per household. What is the cost of a home mitigation system?
Again, you'd have to ask the DEP. We have some general idea what it is, but it's a lot less expensive than that.
It would seem to be. I'm just wondering what the urgency to the project is if we can install these systems in individual households until we can work out a lawsuit or something else to go after the people who perpetrated this on the town. And the only other question I have, you showed, this is more of a personal question, but on your map, you showed the service running to the end of Gagnon Road. My property on 10 Lotz is directly at the intersection of Gagnon and 10 Lotz across the street. Will that be within the service area, or are you not crossing into 10 Lotz at all?
We're going to try to reach everybody that we can.
Okay.
This is a very preliminary report, very preliminary. We looked at this as simply to provide options to the town of Fairfield if they chose to proceed with developing a public water supply in this area. We are not promoting anything. We are providing you with information.
Thank you very much for your time tonight, sir.
Just as an example for that, you know, when Derigo started this report last fall, the numbers have changed and the locations have changed. When they started, there was nothing on the Davis Road, and now there's contamination on the Davis Road. So, it is constantly evolving.
Hi, my name's Ken Ellis. I live out on the Ridgeway at Fairfield. My well is contaminated, not a high level. It actually passed before they lowered the standards. Folks have been talking about going after DuPont, going after whoever did this. Is the Kennebec Water District and the Kennebec Sewer District two different entities?
Yes, they are.
Kennebec Sewer District wasn't mentioned. I mean, are they responsible? They generated the stuff. I agree with the guy before me. Why spend $47 million for 150 houses when those filters are better than what you want to give us? That's just crazy. I mean, that's just throwing money away. I'm sorry. I own a business. I own a greenhouse. Chlorine is not great for plants. Actually, the PFAS doesn't affect the plants hardly at all. They say it does not go up beyond the blossoms. Your fruits and most of your vegetables are still fine. I can't get a real answer from anybody. I talked to the DEP, I talked to the CDC, I talked to Department of Ag. There are no answers they want to give you. I know my plants don't like chlorine. Penny has left, but I can tell you right now, her coral hates chlorine. You're going to put her out of business, you're going to be damaging my business, and I have to pay for it to be damaged. That's ludicrous. Are they still spreading PFAS? Yes. If they stop spreading PFAS, the supply will dry up, or is it forever there? I mean, I mean, it's called forever chemicals, but it's in the water, it's going somewhere. It's going to Waterville for all I care. I mean, it's not stationary.
They've limited it.
It does have to go somewhere sometime. My property never had sludge spread on it. My property is contaminated from my neighbor who spread it on his property. I went to the DEP about that. They don't want to know about it. They don't even want to know that that could happen. All they care about, and they told me, all they care about are the properties that were permitted. They don't care about mine. I don't know. It just seems ludicrous. Spend forty-seven million dollars for a hundred and fifty wells.
In answer to your sludge question, because I've also asked that, my understanding from the DEP and from various different other municipalities is that the spreading of municipal solid waste was put in a moratorium in 2019. However, there are still some larger plants such as Portland, Lewiston, where they do not have any option but for spreading at this point in time. There is currently a bill in the legislature that will stop that. There's a fee associated with it, and there's a lot of concern about landfill capacity because that's where it will ultimately go if not used by some other source. It is sometimes used as a fuel source in various different locations. It is burned, the byproduct that's left over as opposed to being spread. But right now, it is not illegal to spread biosolids from waste treatment plants.
How about in Fairfield?
There is none being spread in Fairfield. Like you said, Fairfield, I don't think that there's been any spread in Fairfield since, you know, early part of 2000s, mid 2000s. But I know that nothing local in this region has been spread since 2019. Nord's Walk, right next door, for example, spreads their biosolids out at their airport. And when that moratorium went into effect in 2019, that stopped, and they have to send that to Madison. The Madison Anson Waste Treatment Plant recently received a large grant, which is hopefully going to be able to help eliminate PFAS in their effluent, which is the liquid that's discharged into the water bodies. However, their sludge will still, which is where the constant, most of the concentration is, will ultimately have to be landfilled.
One of my questions is, and I doubt anybody here really knows, but is PFAS forever? I mean, it is moving, it has moved. If you stop putting it on, it will go away. And the poor people downstream, sorry.
But nobody knows when, and nobody's been able to figure it out yet. It hasn't stopped yet.
Okay. All right, well, that was my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sue Otis. I live on the Howe Road in Fairfield, right next door to Kathy and Bruce. Now I'm going to talk about medical, what's happening to everybody that lives on the Howe Road. There's cancers. Me and my husband have had our blood tested. You can have so much PFAS in your system where it doesn't bother you. I think it's point five. I have thirty-five hundred. My husband has cancer now of the bladder from water, from the PFAS. There's a lot of cancer on our road. The soil is still contaminated. We had a garden, I was so excited to plant a garden before we found this out. We ate the vegetables, come to find out, our soil is so highly contaminated, it's twenty-seven thousand with PFAS. In our water, our soil is contaminated, our house inside, the dust, the attic, the insulation is still has PFAS in it. The fields all back, they're not cut, they're not tacked, so everything that's been planted with PFAS is blowing right towards us every year. And they were dumping. We built our home there thirty-seven years ago, and they were dumping in back of our house. And Kathy is right, Bruce tried to stop those trucks. And he couldn't do it. Nobody could do it. They said it was safe, don't worry about it. To answer the question, they are still dumping. They're dumping in Albion, Nord's Walk, and Skowhegan on two oh one. I'm very upset because we put so much pride in our home. Everybody has. Our value of a home is nothing. Our land is worth nothing. Our taxes are so high, twenty-seven hundred dollars. We can't sell our home. I couldn't in good faith sell my home to anybody with contaminated home, soil, everything. Be in our shoes for once, just one time. I drank the water for thirty-seven years. My time is done, but my grandchildren have swam in our pool that we filled with this well water, have eaten the vegetables that I planted. It's just a never-ending cycle. And it needs to be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tom Duchesne. I live on Wood Street. I moved here in 2015. First, I want to thank our town council for taking this problem seriously. I think we've seen their commitment. Want to thank Derigo for their work. It's not easy. A lot of fear in this community, a lot of anger. I sense that here tonight. A lot of people are worried about their homes, their health. I grew up in Arista County, Fort Kent to be exact, and we use DDT. How many of you remember DDT? According to the newspapers and the talking heads, I should be walking around with warts growing all over me. Or have died from cancer forty years ago. Now, where did this problem start? Chemistry, industry. In the clothes you wear, the furniture you have. You don't want stains on your couch. The science of the day did not indicate that that was a problem. As a matter of fact, there are letters in farmers' file cabinets from the main DEP stating that PFAS was not a problem. Now, all of these producers that you're talking about tonight, that you're angry at, your investment, your health, they had to get a permit to spread that stuff. And the state of Maine gave them the permit. Who's the state of Maine? It's all of us. So you want to sue the state of Maine? We're all going to pay. Well, we're going to pay somehow, but I will ask the council, and I will ask all of you for patience. If there's six, seven, or eight parts per trillion in China, let's do some soil testing. Let's have the state do some soil tests and test to see if there's PFAS coming into that reservoir. Spend fifty million dollars and boom, now they're over twenty. What do we do about that? Is it scrubbing systems? What do we do? Let's not run scared, folks. Let's not start biting at each other. Let's work together. I'm so sorry for the people who are ill and people who are scared. So am I. But I'm going to keep strong and wait for the science, okay? Let's be strong together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Trisha Poulain from the Sixth Rod Road. My brother just came up and spoke briefly for me because I was too scared to come up and talk. But I own a daycare. Daycare's been on my property for four years now. Looking back, I bought the house that I live in now from my grandfather who passed away from bladder cancer. A football-sized tumor on his bladder, which, you know, we'll never know. Was it linked, was it not linked? Something we'll probably never get the answer to. My well is contaminated. It is not one of the high numbers. I think it's like seventy parts per trillion, so I'm on the lower end of the spectrum. The state knowing that a daycare is there, after a little bit of a fight, they came in, they gave us our filtration system, and since then, we have had zero PFAS detected. So I think that everything everybody here is doing is great. I'm glad you're putting options out there. But as a business owner, a family person, I've got a family, a daughter, a nephew that spends more time at my house than, not just between daycare and being with me, and right now, they're safe. I just don't feel that I should be put in a situation where I am forced to give children, mind you, I am allowed twelve children in my care at a time. There are sixteen different children that are in and out of my home besides my nephew and my daughter a weekly. So you're telling me that I don't have a choice, or I shouldn't have a choice, to give these children zero, non-detected, or the seven point whatever parts per trillion? Not to mention the cost of how much water will go through. We were allotted four hundred and twenty-four gallons a month of water for drinking and cooking for the daycare. So you're telling me if you put that into numbers, when you add in toilets, dishes, laundry, the amount of money that I'm going to be spending to pay for water when I'm already taxed on this and everything else, I just don't think that if it's an option for some people and they wish to take that option, great, good for you. However, I don't feel that it would be a choice for me. I just want the choice. And I think at the end of the day, all of you guys that are parents, how would you guys feel knowing that you're sending your kid to a daycare who could have a choice? Would you rather send your kid to a daycare that's drinking water, or washing their hands in their water, or swimming, or any of the things over? Would you rather them have zero, or it be undetected? Or would you rather be them getting forever chemicals put in their body every day? I think we all know the simple answer to that, and that's no. Nobody wants their kid to be put in this situation because I know that it's been detrimental to my entire family. My grandmother's sitting over there, and her levels are unheard of. So I've grown up drinking that water, eating her vegetables from her garden, all the things. So just keep that in mind, that we should have a choice. And it's a choice that could affect lots of littles that don't deserve to be put in the situation that they're about to be put in or could be put in. Thank you.
Thank you.
While she's signing up in that too, I just wanted to mention that with what everybody is saying, we understand. And on the next primary election, we are planning on putting a ballot question on the election, which says, "Do you favor expansion of the Kennebec Water District's public water system to serve the PFAS-impacted areas of Fairfield? And that all existing properties adjacent to the new public water mains will be required to connect to those mains. Project to be funded by donations, forgivable loans, grants, undesignated fund balance, and at least amount possible of bonds and taxation." That's going to be on the ballot for voting. So it's not something that we have decided that it's got to be done. It's going to be up to the people. Yes?
George, the folks at home can't hear you. You would need to, you'd need to go to the podium, please. We can't hear you.
Hi, my name is Ginger Raymond. And you're right, Sarah, I am pissed off, to put it plainly. This is like deja vu from twenty years ago, when we had the issue before. I grew up on the Hailhur Road. I moved away for a few years in my early twenties, and then I went back and I brought my children back. So they grew up there. And now, now, you're telling us we can't plant a garden? Which, I don't just plant a garden. I plant community garden because I give away food. I gave it away thinking it was organic. It's not. It's crap. My son is supposed to be building on that land, which is right dab in the middle. He's supposed to be bringing his three babies this summer to build a house for his family. He's not going to now. But I have twenty-five acres worthless. And then you're asking all of us to have our taxes raised more to put in a water system? The water system that is contaminated?
That exists right now.
So what's the difference? And when you had it looked at, why didn't you look at all the options? All of them should have been looked at, talked about, and given to us. We should have a choice. We didn't have a choice that our water and our ground is contaminated. But now you're going to take the choice away from people who either want their well water or put on a filtration system, or they have to be on city water. And let me tell you, that city water is not a dollar a day if you have a family. Because I now live in Clinton. Let me tell you, it is not a dollar a day. And every single day, for the next forty days, I am taking my mom, who lived out there for fifty years, for treatments, every single day. My ex-husband almost died of cancer from us living out there. I have health issues from living out there. It just goes on. So the fact that you are not looking at all the options, giving people choices and all the information, and when someone says, "Follow the science," the science has been there, but no one, no one wanted to hear it twenty years ago when I brought it forward. Because it was there. They just kept telling us, "Your wells are fine." They weren't fine twenty years ago, and they're not fine today.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Adams. To many of you, Jack. I live on Pirate Lane, Fairfield Center. I have twice contacted the state about testing Pirate Lane. I keep getting a no answer. Maybe sooner or later, that will happen. My main reason right now to be here is I would like to seek permission from the council to let an individual that doesn't live in Fairfield come out and speak. Senator Scott Seaway here. He has spoken to the federal government on this. If it's acceptable, I'd like to have him come up.
Yeah, we would, Scott is the senator for this town, so we'll allow it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Senator Scott Seaway, and I represent this area. This is my eighth year. I just want to tell you a little bit that I've heard today that, you know, I've heard all the things, the concerns about the water... all the things, the concerns about the water main and all that. And I think it's great that Fairfield's been working hard at this. And there's a lot of work at place to even do what they've done. But I, my big concern is your immediate health. And that's something that probably wasn't talked about much. And so I think, and I'll go back to myself, you know, I grew up on a farm myself and so I know quite a bit about chemicals, you know, how they react. I was in a barn one time, fogging up the barn, and I had a reaction and I actually passed out. My father brought me to the hospital and they had to give me that, what is it? Some type of drug just to get you back, you know? Right? Not Narcan, but it was, right? I hope it wasn't. Anyway, I'm about ready to be... So anyway, later on, I got into breeding cattle artificially, and I did it for eight years. And I had boot wash that I used, and it was twenty, fifty times the strength of the, of the towelettes that you wipe your hands with. It was dimethylbenzylmonium chloride. So it was a chemical. And every time I got manure on my jumpsuit I had, I washed it off while it got in my skin, and I didn't know it. And so I did that for eight years, and I ended up getting disabled for a year. And the doctors didn't even know what was wrong with me. They couldn't figure it out. My liver levels were wicked high. They actually thought I was an alcoholic and I never drank in my life. And, you know, they didn't know. And they did biopsies, everything. And finally, I had a doctor that had me take a test.
Thirty seconds.
Yep. I know, it's going to... The bottom line is that I had to go to Dallas, Texas for the Environmental Health Center down there to find out what was wrong with me. We didn't have that here. So what I'm asking the group here to do is actually do the research, find out what everyone here in Fairfield can do to help their health. Because it may be just a lot of little things that you can do to help yourself, like taking lemon and putting it in your water. It helps filtrate your liver and your, and...
Time.
Saunas. So anyway, that's what I'd like to ask, if that'd be interested for your group to do. Thank you.
Well, I think it's appropriate for at least one of us on behalf of everybody here. I'm assuming that most of the people here are in the affected area. I don't know how many people here are from right in town. How many people have wells here? Okay. So that's obviously a representative population of the affected people from this, regardless of the money or the vision or the planning. If I had the entire town here of six thousand people and had them raise their hands, this voice would be lost completely.
Your question, please.
So, well, it's a statement, maybe it's a question. Why is the council not voting now as to whether or not to go forward based upon the lack of consensus and the varying views of the people who are right here?
Because they're letting the people do the voting.
But they're going to lose their voice. All the people in town don't know that much about PFAS. They're not drinking it. They, as far as they're concerned, okay, we've got to spend a little money, but it...
I'm sorry, that's not something that everybody knows in town. They know PFAS as well as out of town.
But they're not familiar...
The voting will be on the ballot.
We chose to live out of town for so many of us for the quality of our water.
Enough. Voting will be on the ballot.
All right, well...
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Cisak. I live on Bunker Avenue here in Fairfield. I do live downtown, and I guess I'm also a recipient of Kennebec Water District's PFAS as well. So my two questions would be, one, what is Kennebec Water District doing to address its own issues of filtering out the PFAS that's in its water that it's delivering to the citizens? And the other question I have is, with the ordinance that is proposed, who will pay for the people to be hooked up? As a, it sounds like an unfunded mandate that would be a great financial burden on every individual who has, has to connect to the newly installed, if it goes through, water district, water lines. So I, those are two concerns that I have. But I do want to thank the council for all the work it has done. They've put a tremendous amount of time and effort into this. And my heart goes out to everybody in this town.
Yeah, for the first question there, you'll have to contact the Kennebec Water District. They'd be willing, I'm more than willing to discuss what their plans are, I'm sure.
I realized here it would be rhetorical, but...
Yeah. So I think you could talk to them and find out an answer to that question there. We're not a representative of the Kennebec Water District, so we really can't answer for them. And we have included in the cost estimates, and like I said, we would try to get as much grant as possible to make this project happen, if you want it. And that would include hooking up into people's homes and the meter charges, the meter services and everything into the homes. What it does not include is the annual charges.
I understand that. I was just, it's the physical cost of the physical lines going into the homes.
Right.
Because those lines will also become the homeowner's responsibility...
That's correct.
From where the turnoff is.
That's correct.
So there's another concern that I have as a ratepayer. Because I would have that same issue on my property, which I do.
Right, that's correct. And a lot of the funding sources don't actually allow going on to private property because it is owned by the homeowner there. So there would be some hoops to jump through to make sure that the funding was available for that.
It would need to be done, some help for any individual should the project go through.
Pardon me?
I said, yes, it would need to be addressed should the project go through.
Absolutely, absolutely must be addressed.
Financial aid is, I think, would be, that would be mandatory to fund that. If you're going to mandate a, or if we actually as voting citizens who will be voting one way or the other on the ordinance.
Yeah, we agree, and we have included costs in the overall project for those costs.
Thank you for your time, and I did appreciate your presentation.
And I can, and I can add to Rick's answers is that, one, there, it is suspected, this is just broad, that treatment systems for water districts themselves would be eligible for grant funding. There is actually a current system in the county, I can't remember which community it's actually in, in which it has a PFAS filtration system attached to it. So PFAS is filtered out prior to the distribution throughout the municipality and its service area. So whether that is on the Kennebec Water District's radar, that is definitely an answer that would need to come from them. And again, like Rick said, the cost estimates that are here were done so that it included everything, because the council was in agreement that if you were going to have to force someone to connect, the last thing we wanted to do is anybody to have to pay for it. However, like was mentioned by DeRago, some of these loans will, these grant systems will only pay for funding to the edge of right-of-way and not all the way to the home. But there are other funding sources that will pay that extra distance. So the whole process and the portion of this conversation this evening, and for folks to understand what this means, is that if this project was to go forward, it's going to take years' worth of work in order to ensure the funding is done and the funding was done properly. It's not, it's not a one-and-done. It's not, we say we're going to do this project and we're just going to whip it all up tomorrow and put it out to the taxpayers to pay for. It's not that kind of project. It's five, six years, could be seven years, before this build-out could happen, because it is everyone's goal to make sure that it is not the municipality that's footing the bill for any of this. But before that work is undertaken and before we start spending months applying for grants, is why the council is here, to hear from the community and will have that vote so to know what the community wants before we undertake all that effort for nothing. So it is up to you to decide how we go forward and how that happens. And it will take time. If it is a project that is voted forward again, it will take a long time for it to be done in order to absorb every single pocket of money we can possibly pick up. And we're looking for all of them. Or anything that's right for the picking and you hear about it, just let us know because we're going to go after it.
Hi, my name's Steve Mather. I live over in Pirate Lane. And my question is, now, my area currently isn't under any of your phases. So are there any plans down the road to eventually do the entire town? Or is this pretty much going to be stopped after phase three?
Currently, we've just gone to phase three. As this thing evolves, there may be more places where main extensions are needed in the future, Pirate Lane being one of them.
Well, I'm kind of hoping you don't, because I have good well water, but...
It's all, it's all going to be based on the need and what the community wants.
And my other question is, now, you spoke about the, about asking the referendum. Shouldn't that really be two questions? Shouldn't you be asking people if they want to bring water in and then if they want people to mandate it? That should really be two questions.
I wholeheartedly agree with you. Unfortunately, in order for the system to work and based upon the Kennebec Water District's adoption of the system, it is not possible at this time. It is an all-or-nothing approach in order for it to function properly.
Sorry, Mark Andre again. I just had a procedural question, Councilor Pikiati. Did I say that right?
No.
Huh? Rats. You say that again for me sometime. The referendum you're proposing, is it a binding or a non-binding referendum?
It would be a binding referendum. It would, for at that point, it would be, we're either going to expand the water out or we won't expand the water out. Our, one of our concerns is what happens with all of the people that have the filtration systems in the well and they're all working really well and doing a nice job, and the E.P. comes in and says, "Oh, we're sorry, we're out of money now, so you've got to replace your own filters and do your own thing." That's, that's, that was one of the things that we were looking at.
You know, the one thing that I couldn't help but notice, the numbers of affected people are changing every day. The situation evolves a little every day. You have another election coming in November that will have a much larger turnout. Possibly a non-binding referendum in June to get the initial public sentiment, and then proceed with a formal referendum in November might be a better option to get a better reflection and help to develop more data and evidence.
Yeah, it's something that we can bring up because we have to vote on the referendum.
It was just a suggestion.
So the, the article that is before them is, "Do you favor the expansion?" Not, not, "Will we vote to expand?" So it's, it's non-binding.
Okay. Well, after all, I've had the opportunity to declare, I will now declare the public meeting closed. You can go home.
Thank you for coming, folks. And please, I mean, you're more than welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting.
Do I have to?
But I hope to see every single one of you here for town meeting in May to vote on the budget, when we actually will count your vote.
Yeah, the information. Call the meeting to order. All right. We will now call the third order of business, which is public comments. A limit, three-minute time equivalent to public speaking. Members of the public may email comments to council@info@fairfieldme.com by 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting on any topic or agenda item. Items may be read aloud at this time. Were there any items?
None that we haven't already addressed.
Okay. Moving to fourth order of business, reports from staff and committees, town manager report.
All right. So on March 10th, the police chief, captain, and I were able to tour the Somerset Animal Shelter in Skowhegan. This will be on a future agenda for the council for your discussion. I believe it's in your first or second meeting in April. Also, on May 15th, attended the K.V. Cochrane Board of Directors meeting. March, did I say May? March, March 15th. March 17th, we had the KRDA first part annual budget meeting was held here right at the community center. Their 22, 23 budget was approved. Fairfield's annual assessment is not, not anticipated to increase. March 22nd, I attended the Chambers Meet the Reps event. That was last night. I was able to speak with several representatives of our federal and state delegations, and most conversations involved drinking water expansion. I also wanted to mention too, that last week, the town was the recipient of a charitable donation from Albert E. Hodgson III. The Al had given $32,000 donation to the Kennebec Sanitary Treatment District so that the district municipalities could be reimbursed for the cost of the 2019 forced main failure that had happened at the main pump station in Waterville, if y'all remember that. The ground opened up down on Front Street. The town's portion of the reimbursement was $20,012.80, so we were in receipt of that last week. And just as a little bit of an aside, if you are not aware, Mr. Hodgson did pass away last evening, so our deepest condolences go out to his family.
Yep, very sad.
And then for project updates, we have received word this morning that the fire trainings facility will start being delivered Friday morning. So it'll be here over the course of Friday and Saturday this week. And then also, at the end of this week, the mailers for the April 13th meeting on the annual budget will be going out in the mail so that folks have them in time for your public hearing on the annual budget at your next meeting. And that is it for me.
Okay, committee reports.
Just that the economic committee will be meeting the first Tuesday in April at 3:30 in the council room.
Okay, that being it. Then moving on to our fifth order of business, which is the consent agenda. Now, these items are considered routine or standard business and therefore will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests prior to consideration of this portion of the agenda, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered next on the agenda. All right, item 2234, ordered that the Fairfield Town Council hereby waives the reading of and accepts the minutes for meeting 202205, held on March 9th, 2022. Item 2235, ordered that the Town Council hereby approves a treasurer's warrant, number 56 general fund, in the amount of $127,244.63. Not limited to, but including MSAD, 49 fuel, Northeast Salt Motor Vehicle, and KSTD and CMP.
So moved second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie's full. Sixth order of business, to take action on the following items of business as read by the council chair. Item 2236, ordered that the Town Council hereby signs the warrant for a special town meeting notice of election to be held on June 14th, 2022. hereby signs the warrant for a special town meeting notice of election to be held on June 14th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie's full.
This is where your question regarding. This is, sorry.
I'm sorry.
This is where your question regarding the public drinking water system would go. Okay, this is the document that that needs to go on. So the council did receive a memo where the ballot question had been put together and with a few notes. So what we'd be looking to do is you would sign a special town meeting warrant, notice of election to be held on June 14th, 2022 to include two seats for the three-year term for MSAD 49 school board. And do you favor the expansion of the Kennebec Water District's public water system to serve the PFAS impacted areas of Fairfield? And that all existing properties adjacent to the new public water mains will be required to connect to those mains. Project to be funded by donations, forgivable loans, grants, undesigned fund balance and at the least amount possible bonds and taxation.
Stephanie.
I've got some concerns based on what I've heard tonight. First of all, the referendum. And I understand about the, the doing it in November as well. I understand that part.
Yep.
But I think we need to talk about this a little bit further because, first of all, do people want it? You know, when we start thinking 157 people with filtration systems and we're going to go for a $48 million project. And I didn't hear one person, well, maybe Max Kenny alluded to it, about the fact that what happens if the state doesn't follow through? It doesn't seem to be an issue for those people that have the filtration systems now. You know, I, I, I heard everybody. I think that we need to take a look at this. Do we really want to have a referendum question on the ballot in June to see if people are interested in us doing it? And I, the man that spoke about the fact that we don't get a lot of people out for a June election, but we'll have more in November, so true.
Well, this is just kind of putting out a feeler for where people stand. We're not obligated by any.
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't binding.
It should be just one question.
Right.
Not talking about the fact that, talking about the water mains and hooking up. We don't even have an ordinance in the town of Fairfield for this. So it's putting the cart before the horse anyways. So do you favor, I, I think what should be read is, do you favor the expansion of the Kennebec Water District's public water system to serve the PFAS impacted areas of Fairfield? And that, and, and stop it right there.
Well, I don't, the problem is, Michelle might back it up, but the water district itself is the one that is telling us that they will not accept the other one.
Is that, is that non-flexible? Is that non?
And I think we need to look into this.
Is that something that we can't sit down?
Getting all riled up now.
Negotiate a certain number, 70%, 65%, whatever number? Is that automatic?
From what I have been told, it's non-negotiable. It has been their statement from the very beginning. And it is, it is because of the need to have the users in order to ensure that, one, they have the funding, they need to maintain the system, but also to maintain water quality for usage. And that it, that they have to go hand in hand. Which is the reason why the, the article question is written the way it is because, because that is the problem. Is, is it is all or none? And, you know, so, and then into Stephanie's point of, do we wait till November? Because remember, this is just do you favor, not we will do. But there are two different grants that require applications to be filed by April 3rd and I think another one is by April 8th that could potentially pay for the entire design of the first phase out of one of those grants. And then the other grant is discretionary money through Collins office at the federal level. The issue is, is that if we don't, can't demonstrate any sort of community buy-in to this project, there's no sense to bother to file for the applications. And even if we did file, and, and to, the issue is, is that the current plan, so the current plan in my office and the various different organizations we work with is to continue to go forward with those applications because they're not going to be awarded until October, November. But you will have the results of this June referendum question. And then you have those fundings that you could use. Because say, say we're successful with a northern border regional commission grant, we receive $350,000. It funds the design of phase one. With no, there, there's a 20% match to us that would be minimal. We have the funds for that in the, the ARPA money that we received. So we, so we have the match for that. I think that's usually a 20% match. And you could do the design. Just because you do the design, doesn't mean you do the construction. It doesn't inherently mean construction is done unless you have the money for construction. But should the vote in June says that the majority of the community's answer is no, then the applications get withdrawn, no harm, no foul. And we're done.
Because with all due respect, I see this as being, okay, do, does the town want us to pursue this? I see that. But then the other side of that coin is the fact that we need to require or mandate people to actually sign up for this water. I have an issue with that too.
That was the biggest crowd response when the one gentleman made that comment. I think it was Ed Malley made that comment and that was the biggest crowd response.
Right. And, and so this is my thing. We've only talked with Kennebec Water District. They're saying yes, they're a business. We, everybody has to do this to keep the water flowing. I understand that. However, what's, if, say I, out of that 157, maybe 50 people don't want to hook up. Is that still going to be detrimental to the Kennebec Water District's quality of the water? We're already putting in, or the plan is to have a water tower, a pumping station out at Nice Corner, all of that. We don't know. We need to investigate that a little bit more, I think, Michelle.
So that is what the water district is saying. So the water district has seen this report. They've reviewed it. Their engineers have reviewed it. They've had discussions with, with DeRago Engineering. They've had discussions with me and DeRago Engineering. That's the answer.
So out of all, all those houses need to be hooked up.
It's going to be more than 157 though. It's going to be anybody who's along that route.
Right, right. But even if it's just 50 people, isn't it going to be detrimental?
And, and I, I agree with you. I, I, I think that this is probably the very worst part of this entire project. I think a lot of people would. But just for a little bit of context, if this had been a sewer expansion project, it wouldn't even be up for debate. There's a law that requires you to connect if it goes by. Okay, so there would be no debate. You would have to connect. So I understand that the word mandated is, is very difficult for folks to, to grapple with in, especially given the last few years of what we've all lived through. But it has not been taken lightly by the water district when they said all must connect. I mean, that is something that has been investigated and that they have looked at and why it has to happen that way.
So in other words, if we go through, we get all the money to invest to expand the waters, public drinking water in this Fairfield and less than half of the people hook up to it. Kennebec Water District can just say, yeah, no, we don't want it.
We don't want it.
And then we own pipe in the road.
That doesn't have anything in it because we don't have a water source.
We don't have a water supply. How are you going to make someone, force them to hook up? I'm sorry. How are you going to sit there and make somebody hook up?
I, I, there are nightmares that flash through my mind. I, I hear you completely.
That would be not our fault.
I know.
It's not our fault. We can't force them.
Right.
And then we don't get 100% and we got pipe in the road.
Right. I, I get it.
Well, they may have air in it, but that's the extent of what we would have in the road. We would have $48 million worth of infrastructure.
They can't hear you.
I'm pretty sure they can hear me, but $48 million worth of infrastructure buried in the town of Fairfield for eternity.
Yep, absolutely.
So in, in, remember, so earlier this evening, it was mentioned, someone mentioned in one of their comments about it being a, making, you know, a superfund site. And, and they're true, but it's not even a federally regulated chemical at this point. You couldn't declare to be a superfund site in order to ensure that the federal government pays for it. I think it's the town of, it's either, I don't want to get it wrong because calling a community a superfund site isn't good if you don't get it right. But it's either Wintrop or Monmouth and they had an issue with one of their closed landfills. And they're a superfund site, but I, I think it, I don't even know as if they still have gotten the money to clean up everything that they needed to clean up. There are places all over the state of Maine where water mains are run and it's mandatory hookup because of groundwater contamination due to leaking gas pipes, I mean, gas tanks at gas stations or those sorts of things. But this question presents the facts as you know them today. Your window to present this question for June is closing. So you need to make a decision so that we can get this material off to the printers so that the ballots can be printed, so that we have 30 days of absentee ballot voting. So that's why this is here. And this is worded this way because anybody, regardless whether they came to this public hearing tonight or they read the article in the newspaper or watched something on the news, this is worded this way because they understand that the water mains require connection based upon what you know today. Even if you were completely uninformed and you went to the polls and you picked this up, you know that there's a cause and effect for the entire thing across the board. Nothing says you have to do it, even if they all vote resoundingly yes. Nothing says we actually build anything.
I think that's the big point that we need to make sure that we remember is that this isn't a binding situation, but we need to at least put this out there, keep the process moving to get that grant money to be able to design. And should we pass it, I mean, we'll be in position to keep moving. I think we should be short-sighted to at least stop at this point, especially when it's a non-binding situation. I totally hear, I totally heard emotions.
Well, I agree that we should have a yay and a on it. It's that other part about the water mains. It's like it's, we don't have a, we don't even have an ordinance for it.
Right, so that's.
But you'd have to create one.
So that's why I think it's putting the cart before the horse. Okay. But, and I understand the cause and effect now. You know, it's, you need, probably need to have that in there. It's.
It's important. It's not an easy choice, but it's important that it goes to.
But I think we're going to have tougher questions coming up. I think this one is actually a fairly easy question to say, let's keep moving forward and put it out to the public and talk about that. But then we're going to have, we're going to have probably more difficult discussions coming up.
Yeah. So I mean, could we put on there, you know, listing it as, as it said and stuff, but somewhere in there mentioned the fact that this is non-binding?
Which is, I think, part of the phrase.
It's the nature of the article itself.
Why does it have to be together, Michelle? Is it because of that cause and effect thing? Because if we had two separate referendums.
Okay, so.
We would know where the people stand on the hooking up.
This, this is the piece. Okay, so if you asked, do you favor the expansion of public drinking water? Yes. If, do you expansion the mandatory hookup? No. But the water district has said, in order to expand public drinking water, you must hook up. What would be the reason for asking two separate questions? It's a non-option.
Right.
So there's no sense to ask.
Yep, point, point taken.
But it's good.
But it's good for discussion.
A lot of discussion.
I mean, we're just at the tip of the iceberg here.
And you heard, you heard the anger, you heard, I mean, understandable, understandably. And you heard the emotion. And they're, I mean, even looking at blaming, I mean, looking to somebody to blame at the moment, which is understandable. And we're just going to have to provide good information and give them good information to make decisions from.
Kristi.
Here's, here's another. Thank you. Michelle asked me to collect a head count this evening. You had 160 folks, 106 folks here this evening, give or take the folks coming and going, but you have 4,500 registered voters.
Yeah, yeah.
Non-registered.
I just want to make sure you were aware.
One of the things I think we need to do, excuse me, is to outline our plan of the sequence of the things that are going to have to happen. Because once we have the vote, we need to know what to expect.
If the vote comes back no.
Either way, either way.
If the vote comes back no, we don't need a plan for anything.
And I wrote that in my notes. We need the positives and the negatives. And go and be very logical about how we're approaching this because this is uncharted water, no pun intended. But I, I need that. Other people are going to need it too. So that we know what we're doing and what to expect. So anyways, I ramble. My, my motion, I'll friendly amendment it because this is the way it is tonight. That the.
As I read it.
As you, as it was read.
As it was read?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Carrie's full.
All right.
Okay.
Moving on to council workshop and other business, discuss other council business.
Oh, good Lord, not at this hour.
There is none.
None.
The next regular meeting of the Fairfield Town Council will be on Wednesday, April 13th, 2022, to be held as a hybrid meeting via Zoom in council chambers at 6:30 PM. At this time, we will recess and sign all documents required, signatures of the council members.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, we're recessed.